Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, January 26, 2021 School Committee Meeting. As always, these meetings are audio and video recorded. We call this meeting to order. We will start with introductions. To my left, actually in front of me.
Natalie Barra, State Representative.
Robert Mullin.
Good evening, Mike Moran.
Good evening, Mike Branko, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Brian McMahon.
Becky Stanton.
Julie Costucci.
Anthony Tenerola.
Jeff Bo.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will seek a motion to approve the January 11, 2021, Joint School Committee Meeting for Board of Health Minutes, January 12, 2021, School Committee Meeting Minutes, and January 12, 2021 Superintendent's Evaluation Subcommittee Minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All who are in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7-0-0. Correspondents?
Mr. Chair, the first item of correspondence in your drive tonight I want to make the committee and the community aware of is a letter from the Merrimack Valley Superintendent's Association. It was co-authored with local union presidents, and it was sent to Governor Baker. And essentially, it's asking Governor Baker to please consider reclassification of all educators into Phase One of vaccination, of a vaccination rollout. The letter details the fact that we believe teaching and having kids in person and public school should be considered an essential employee. It's a critical aspect of our society. So, the author was signed by myself, as well as co-presidents Shelby Goffin and Jason Lewis. And just so I can read a few of the communities who also signed on to it. Most of the Merrimack Valley, Andover, Air Shirley, Billricka, Carlisle, Chumsford, Drakeett, Georgetown, Greater Lowell, Groton, Dunsborough, Havre, Littleton, Lowell, Methuen, and the Shover Valley, North Andover, North Middlesex, North Reading, Tewksbury, Tinsborough, Wakefield, and Whittier Tech. So, it was a joint letter sent from our group to Governor Baker requesting a reclassification of priority for vaccination. Just want to make the community aware.
Thank you. Also in correspondence, we have received a letter from the TTA leadership. It's a short letter, so I'll read it. It stated, "January 26, 2021, Tinsborough School Committee. The Tinsborough Teachers Association and District Administration have been working diligently together over the past several months to ensure a safe working environment for staff and a safe, educationally sound environment for all students. Some of the successes this year include having air filters in classrooms and shared spaces in the middle and high school to allow for five air exchanges per hour or higher, providing staff the option to work from home on Wednesdays, engaging in discussions about implementing pool testing for members of the district, signing a joint letter to Governor Baker asking that teachers be moved up in priority for COVID-19 immunizations, and creating working groups in each building to facilitate a smooth transition as students begin coming to school on Wednesdays. In order to ensure that the success of the past continues into the future, we need to continue working collaboratively, tough word, towards the shared goal of getting more students into the building while maintaining mitigation strategies to ensure the safety of all. Sincerely, Tinsborough Teachers Association Leadership, Shelby Goffin, Jason Lewis, Katie Lehe, Eileen Canadge Atopoulos, and Kristen Maraca." Thank you for that. Visitors, comments, and questions?
I believe we do have some visitors here tonight. Dr. Branko is grabbing them right now.
Thank you. Hi, so please state your name, your address. It's my understanding you have a letter on behalf of the teachers, correct?
Correct.
So typically, we only allow three minutes. In the interest of smoothness, we're going to let you read the whole thing.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Corinne Turner. My address is 61 Marcus Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. I am a teacher here at the high school. This letter that I was about to read, it was sent out by email to my fellow staff members here at the high school, at the middle school, and at the elementary school on Sunday afternoon. And it has been signed by 59 of those fellow staff members. Dear School Committee Chair, the educators of the Tinsborough Public Schools believe it is of the utmost importance to advise the school committee of the vital role teachers play within the school district. What is a school district without teachers? Teaching is a challenging and rewarding profession. We are tasked with the awesome responsibility of guiding the next generation. Educators are mentors, coaches, motivators, eye-openers, mediators, entertainers, technology specialists, role models, event planners, curators, protectors, and difference makers. The work of a teacher can be grueling and exhausting, but we love what we do. We do it because we know the impact we have can change the world. And we want you, the school committee, to know that too. To that end, please accept this level to voice our concerns about the possible change to our concurrent hybrid learning model. The benefits of bringing students into the buildings for additional two days per month are outweighed by the negative impact this will have on educators. This model is not easy, and it is far from perfect. Teachers are working under vastly different circumstances than we ever have, but we are making it work. We are putting time above and beyond normal expectations at the expense of our own families, personal lives, and health. While we have tried to make the school year look good thus far, it has come with tireless work beyond what most people seek. We want the best possible learning experience for our kids, but we would be remiss if we were not honest about our current situation. The concurrent model creates a very stressful and overwhelming work environment. We want students back in person. However, the pandemic continues, and we are unable to safely return all students to full five days per week. Changing the current hybrid model to another hybrid model will not alleviate the problems that arise with this type of learning environment. The following issues include those cited at the December 1 School Committee meeting. Via amount of work, coding, and preparation, this new model places on teachers far outweighs the benefits of an extra two days per month for students. To change our current model feels like we will need to take a step back to make a new model work. Students are creatures of habit and work well when they know what to expect from their school day. Teachers have worked every day to build these routines and schedules to help students feel grounded in their learning environment. To change this will create more confusion for students who have come to rely on the schedules we have worked hard to build. Wednesdays are the only day where our kids, remote and hybrid, are on an even playing field. The technology needed to teach to in-person students while simultaneously teaching it to at-home students is much more complicated than teaching to one group. Wednesdays are a day when teachers check in with fully remote students. At the elementary school, some teachers use these days to schedule reading time with fully remote students that do not get face-to-face time with them. Teachers at all buildings often use this time to reteach concepts to students in small group settings. Wednesdays were set up by design to be a day to schedule meetings, collaborate with teams, have consultation meetings with related service providers, et cetera. Without this day, we will be out of our classrooms more and require substitute coverage, which is already in this year. Teachers' planning time has been drastically changed this year. With this concurrent model, all of our in-person, hands-on lessons now have to be digitalized, which is very time-consuming, and it takes much preparation and organization. This year, teachers at the elementary and middle school have a planning room to sit together during planning time. We are not able to plan or work in our own rooms, which makes planning for upcoming lessons difficult. We have to make this time up on our own to ensure we have access to our rooms and materials therein. We are still in the middle of a pandemic. Tinsborough is now, and has been for the past 10 weeks, designated a high-risk community. Wednesdays were to be used for deep cleaning as well as to provide a 24-hour lag time between cohorts. Is this no longer the case? It is imperative to have this break between cohort sharing the same seating. It also allows for an exposure break for both students and those teachers in the building four days per week. At the December 1 meeting, where the idea of returning students on Wednesdays was put off due in part to COVID numbers, Tinsborough's incidence rate was 37.6% and our positivity was 5.19. As of January 1, our incident rate is nearly double, 65.6%, and our percent positivity, excuse me, is at 8.84. Additionally, the positive cases in the last 14 days are on the rise. Wednesdays allow the special education teachers' voice to be as prominent as the teachers in our cohort classrooms. On the other days, the special education teacher is forced to shout across the room and keep it with mitigation strategies and the constraints of technology. Half-days were removed from the 2020-2021 school calendar because our little Wednesdays would allow teachers to access final self-directed time. This is used for department meetings at the high school, team meetings at the middle school, and grade-level meetings at the elementary school. The loss of this time will be devastating to an already overburdened workforce. In the end, the return of students on Wednesdays only provides students with two additional days per month. We believe the cost to teachers vastly outweighs the benefits to students. Sincerely concerned educators of the Tinsborough Public Schools.
Thank you. I believe that's it for visitors, comments, and questions?
I believe so.
Thank you. Share the success. Natalie?
At TES, they kicked off their Great Kindness Challenge this week. Students and staff are enjoying spirit days. Kindness quotes are shared daily during morning meetings, allowing students to discuss how they can spread kindness. They are excited to begin their 2021-2022 kindergarten registration to ensure that the health and safety of their families and staff. They will hold a no-contact registration process. Families should drop off completed registration documents to the main lobby vestalule. Registration paperwork should be dropped off between Monday, February 8, through Friday, February 19, between 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. All of the necessary paperwork can be found on their website. At TMS, they are about to start their educational visioning for the middle school project. Several staff members, administrators, and parents are participating in the educational design of the new school. There are five workshops, a faculty meeting, and a community night, all via Zoom, to facilitate this process. They are starting their knowledgeable activity via Google Meet after school. They are hoping there will be a competition this spring, but just the same, it will be great to offer this as an after-school activity. And the Yearbook Club is expanding and trying to engage more students in taking pictures and designing pages. They are hoping to get many interested students in the coming days. At THS, the high school quiz show team competed in their Super Sunday, looking to qualify to appear on the WGBH High School Quiz Show. The qualifying test was held virtually this year, and they will receive full results in the upcoming weeks. Student Council is making plans for a Valentine's Day fundraiser. Details for the fundraiser will be announced soon. Senior class officers have met with their class advisors to discuss plans for the end-of-year activities. Class dues are being collected, and plans are also being made for a Yankee Candle Senior Fundraiser. Thank you to everyone who supported the Chipotle Senior Class Fundraiser last month. We raised over $500 for our class and through all of your generous support. THS is hosting a virtual college fair on February 4. Students have the opportunity to meet with representatives from 70-plus colleges and universities. And in Tinsborough High School Athletic News, the girls varsity basketball team is off to a strong start with their season of a 3-0 record. They are currently playing Lunenburg and have their senior night coming up this Friday against Lunenburg as well. The boys team is trying to find their rhythm along with rebuilding their team with the Young Squad this year. They are currently having their senior night tonight. The ski team has been improving these past few weeks in hopes to get even better in their future races. They have done well at their two races so far, and their upcoming race is this Thursday. Abby Cornelia received third place in a giant slalom, which is her career best, so congratulations, Abby. And the hockey team beat Lowell for the first time since 2016 with a 2-0 victory. Congratulations to all of our athletes. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you.
Subcommittee update, Capital Asset. Mr. Mullin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, Mr. Tenerola, myself, and Mr. Branko, well, I'm sorry. Dr. Branko, Dr. Flanagan, and Mr. Messina. We had a brief discussion updating us on our projects from last year, where we are financially with those, and starting to put together some ideas for this coming year. We believe we're going to be focusing on a new truck for the district, which is, if you took a look at the pictures of the current truck that we have, I believe that it's actually dangerous to drive at this point with all the rust involved. The other item we're going to be looking to do is to repair the elevator here in this building in the high school. It's been several years since it's had much work. And we think because it's the only elevator in the building, we need to ensure that it is always operating properly for any of our students that may need it at any time. It's very important to keep that going on an everyday basis. I do know the company that comes in and does the monthly work on it, very good. They did the update on the elementary school, one of the elementary school elevators a couple of years ago. Did a wonderful job on that. And they keep these elevators running as well as they can, but occasionally, we need to invest some funds into them. We should have another discussion. And what's our next meeting scheduled?
Oh, we haven't scheduled yet.
They haven't scheduled it yet, but we'll bring to the board our full recommendations at our next meeting.
Thank you. Can you talk a little bit about what the truck is used for?
Well, it's used for plowing at the elementary school for any of the lighter plowing. Obviously, these can't do some of the major plowing and moving, this now. Moving materials back and forth on any given day.
It's the only...
Anything else? Sorry.
Yeah, it's the only dunk truck we have in the district. And it's got, it has almost 40,000 miles on it. It's 19 years old, and those 40,000 miles are all plowing miles. It carries salt and sand in the bed, and it's all rotted through and rusted through. So, our guys have done a great job over there keeping it running and keeping it together. But when we show the pictures at the next meeting, I think you'll see that it's time.
Thank you. One more question. Is there any discussion about the track at the high school?
No, not at this time. It's, that's a very, it's a, that's a large-dollar project. It's, you know, we went, we've gone back and forth on different projects that we really feel are necessary, but it's a hard ask sometimes, depending on what's going on in any given year. And we've had a tough couple of years, the last two years, but...
If I could just add a couple of...
Liz?
The track, oh, sorry, I thought you pointed to me.
No, go ahead, go please.
The track, the track did come up at our School Building Committee meeting last week. As you know, we're looking at seeing if that can be part of the education, part of the middle school. And one of the conversations that we had, you know, from a surface view and using Google Earth and not necessarily being on-site, they're concerned about whether or not we can get six lanes in, given the placement of the bleachers and the concession stand. We're confident, or we believe strongly that we can because we believe there's a variance in the width. We don't need a National Federation track. We need a functioning track here. So, on the School Building Committee side, not Capital Asset side, they're going to potentially send out their landscape architect, who will look at that a lot more closely, and that may become part of the middle school project at some point. But conversations happen there, which is ironically broadened up. We didn't bring it up here because it's over there.
No, that'd be great. I know when we did the football field a couple of years ago, you know, we told the track parents we wouldn't forget about you, so I just want to make sure that's still, you know, in our minds.
I'm hoping if we can get that through our middle school project, I think that's what we ideally would like to do.
That'd be great.
Conversations are coming.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mullin.
I wasn't done, you know.
Oh, carry on, sir.
I got interrupted.
I thought you pointed to me.
I thought so. No, the only thing that I have to say, we're cognizant of what's going on in the, in the community financially for everyone. And we want to make sure that we are not asking for too much, that we're being conservative in these asks, and that the items that we, that we ask for are absolutely necessary right now.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Makes sense.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Flanagan, any other comments?
You sure? This is the time?
I'm good. I'll wait till you point to me.
Personnel?
Mr. Chair, so I'm cutting you off too, huh? We do have one request for leave extension. Chris Landry-Chard.
Point information for the committee. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to take 9A out of order.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? All who are in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7-0-0.
Dr. Flanagan? Thank you. So, Mr. Chair, we have Ms. Manganas and Mr. Reikard here from TES. They're going to do a little presentation there. Our school councils at the elementary school. They're also the content leaders for counseling. If you recall, when we had one of our meetings, I think it was late December, we started talking a little bit about social-emotional learning. And at that point, the committee had made a suggestion that you wanted to hear a lot more about social-emotional learning. So, Dr. Branko, Ms. Lonsick, work with Mrs. Reikard, Ms. Manganas to kind of put together this PowerPoint. Actually, let me rephrase that. Ms. Reikard, Ms. Manganas did all the work for this PowerPoint presentation, and they're going to give you the social-emotional update, so...
Good save.
At this time.
We knew that.
Well, good evening. We appreciate the opportunity to talk with you tonight about the social-emotional supports and initiatives across our district. Like Dr. Flanagan said, I'm Carolyn Reikard, one of the school counselors at TES. And this is my colleague, Kristi Manganas, who's also a school counselor and school psychologist at TES. Together, Kristi and I also serve this year as the district content leaders for counseling. Our colleagues on the Norris Road campus worked with us on the information we're providing here tonight. Thank you to Melissa and Danielle at TMS, and Jamie and Lisa at THS for the work that they do to support the students in their buildings. We understand that the global pandemic has put a spotlight on the emotional well-being of our kids, especially our students that are not able to be here full-time. Tonight, we just wanted to share with you some of the social-emotional supports that we have in place in our district.
So, how do we support the social-emotional needs of students, staff, and families? As counselors, we have many responsibilities as part of our roles in the school. We support students, staff, and families in a variety of ways. However, there are common themes that run throughout our jobs, whether we're pre-pandemic or in the throes of it. Those common themes are relationship building. This is really the heart of what we do as counselors. By building relationships with students, colleagues, and families, we are able to build a foundation upon which to build and address social-emotional concerns as they arise. Our second common area is skill-building by providing children with the skills that they need to be successful. And socially and emotionally, we give them another foundation and the tools to withstand any challenges that they may face. This is accomplished through individual sessions with students, small group work, classroom-based lessons, and also school-wide assemblies. We use our core values and science-based curriculum across the district. And especially at the elementary school, we front-load skills in the early years in order to provide a shared vocabulary among students and staff. As children grow and develop, we expect that they move from learning these concepts to applying them to real-life experiences. And certainly, the concepts of perseverance, flexibility, and resiliency are ones that are at the forefront for all schools this year, being discussed and lived and tested. Our third area is consultation. We provide consultation to staff and families as well as collaborate with outside agencies to support student needs. With all the health restrictions in place this year, we have had to be creative with our roles, and consultation has become an essential part of our work to support educators and families. We're now going to take the time to further break down the supports that we offer by students, families, and staff. Across all three schools, there are some similarities in the counseling support that is offered. All counselors provide individual counseling to students, both special education students and general education students. Some students have diagnosed mental health disabilities, and some display emotional needs as a result of situational experiences, such as grief, situational anxiety, family crisis, or event. Another large portion of our job is collaboration with school nurses, especially this year. Students may present to nurses with physical complaints that result in a referral to our counseling departments.[1578.21] They're also in close contact with families on a regular basis. So these needs come up in frequent conversation. So meeting with nurses and counselors frequently is critical in supporting our students and families. As previously mentioned, we are doing a lot of consultation this year with our regular and special education teachers, related service providers and peer professionals in order to discuss student concerns and needs on a regular basis. We also have ongoing collaboration and consultation with the administrative teams in each of our buildings. Each school has its own system of how often and when the counselors and administrations get together to discuss ongoing concerns and update each other on information related to student performance. And below is just a break down of some of the school based initiatives that we offer across the district. As you can see, that they're specific to the developmental needs of the students. We also wanted to bring some of these initiatives to life for you, so we wanted to share some pictures. These are pictures from TES. In the top corner, you'll see myself and Mrs. Reichardt during our morning news broadcast. Typically, this is run with students, but this year, Mrs. Reichardt and I have taken it over for a bi weekly broadcast where we take the opportunity to use it to build community, to have celebrations in the building, talk about kids' birthdays and also infuse discussions about our core values. Since we're unable to do school wide assemblies this year, it provides a good forum for us to get that information out. You'll also see in the top corner, information about our kindness challenge, which you heard about earlier. And in the bottom, you'll notice a picture that depicts a school wide project before the holidays, where each classroom was given a tree to decorate, the students did ornaments and they were posted around the building. Everyone's in their own little bubble this year, but when we do projects like that, that we can display it, it just reminds us all, we're part of that bigger community, even though we may not see each other as much as we'd like to. I guess at the middle school, students and staff participated in Halloween Dress Up Fun. Even the big kids enjoy dressing up. TMS also enjoyed a mask decoration day where everyone was able to jazz up their face masks for the day. These types of spirit days are often some of the students' favorite times when they can celebrate as a whole school community. At the high school, the picture you're seeing is Senior Sidekicks. This is an initiative that occurred prior to the start of the school year where seniors help orient incoming freshmen to THS. And also for the high school, we have George, the Community Resource Dog that works in conjunction with our school recess officer and is available to support students by appointment. They can scan the QR code. In addition to the supports that are provided to students, it's also important for us to consider the well being of our staff. Our colleagues are working tirelessly this year. All are under considerable stress to make school work the best that they can. As a result, educator self care is essential. And we work to offer suggestions for all of our staff to access that support in ways that are comfortable for them. So at the beginning of the year, we offered two district wide self care sessions. One occurred before the school year started with our students. It was entitled Finding a Healthy Balance This School Year, which really spoke to trying to find that balance between home and school, where those worlds are blending and colliding. And also just think about how to set healthy boundaries for yourself, reasonable expectations and really find what self care fills your cup. It's different for everyone. And because we didn't want that just to be a one shot deal, we offered a self care check in later in the fall once school was underway, to have people revisit what they're doing to take care of themselves. Also at TMS and THS, as part of their staff meetings, the counselors and administrators offer some social emotional staff development. And at TES, we have Wellness Wednesdays where administrators send out a notification every week to staff, offer a treat, have a positive quote. And then Carolyn and I also offer a mindful moment at the end of the day for staff that choose to participate in that. We also have at TES in our counseling hallway, a table of calm. It's basically just a small table that has a quote, a tip for the week and sometimes a little bit of candy. And it's a nice place for people to pause. There's a relaxing fountain. So kids enjoy it too, to be able to walk by that area. And also over the summer, this is a Facebook group that Mrs. Manganas actually started that was for staff as a tool that they could join using the 10% happier app with Dan Harris. But again, it's a mindfulness practice group. And here's just again, some pictures to bring it to life. So on the left is an example of what the administrators send out at our school for our Wellness Wednesday. On the right is a picture of our hallway that Mrs. Reichardt was mentioning. Everyone seems to gravitate towards that water fountain. This at TMS is some pictures of teacher appreciation days that they created, little snippets and a cookie. And then also some building camaraderie with staff t shirts. Move on to family supports. Family outreach is also a very crucial part of our job. That can be initiated either by families reaching out to us for support or us identifying families in need and we reach out to them. At the start of the pandemic last, almost a year ago, we really worked hard to connect with families to help them with the transition to remote learning, help them access the technology and internet services that they needed, alert them to food programs and other resources within the community to help them out. And this year, we've expanded that focus to also include addressing any attendance concerns, remote learning challenges that are occurring, unique family needs and making sure that families have the adequate supplies and resources to support their child's learning, whether they're in the hybrid or remote model. Another way we support families is by sharing resources that become available to us. And we do that by sharing articles, websites, podcasts and other resources through social media and also through the principal's weekly smore newsletters. Additionally, to support families, school counselors work often with outside agencies. By outside agencies, we mean such things as Department of Children and Families, outpatient mental health therapists and psychologists that work with individual students, in home behavioral teams, therapeutic teams. We work in conjunction with these agencies to communicate across a varying level of environments to support the students and kind of streamline and generalize their skills. And lastly, with the school resource officer, the SRO is available to us as needed for instances requiring support related to community safety, attendance, and they're also there for relationship building with students in the community. Lastly, we wanted to talk about what's coming up next. So we're always looking for additional ways to support our school community. So for student initiatives, we have Lynn Lyons, who's a local expert in treating anxiety disorders in children. The counselors across the district have participated in many of her professional development sessions over the years. And she has begun to offer a counselor support group. So our high school counselors will be participating in that on a monthly basis. We also are hoping to reconnect with our partnership with McLean Hospital. McLean offers a consultative model for counselors to be able to have us share cases in a confidential manner, receive training and coaching and consultation around some of our most complex students that we work with. That's a partnership we've had over the past couple of years. We've put it on pause this year and are hoping to reconnect with that in the near future. We're also trying to find ways, you know, children need stability and expectations of things to kind of stay the way they are in a time where nothing is staying the way it is. So we're trying to make creative choices about how to instill those traditions at each school that kids look forward to. So some examples of that, at the high school, they always have alumni day. They're unable to bring all those people in the building, but they're looking for some creative ways to still give the students that experience. And again, as we mentioned, the kindness challenge at TES, we're not able to do it the way we usually do, but we're doing a nice job of, you know, lots of smiles this week. It's a fun place to be, lots of hearts and kindness going on. For family initiatives, moving forward, starting this new year, counselors across the district are going to share some resources for families via the SMORs principal newsletter, more on a monthly basis. So parents can be on the lookout for that. Outreach to our remote students. Counselors and administrators continue to monitor the substantial amount of remote students that we have across the district, making sure that we're also addressing their social emotional needs. Frequent communication regarding students with teachers, parents and administrators is ongoing. And one idea that we're currently throwing around at the elementary school is how to offer remote recess for our fully remote students. So trying to get creative in that situation. And then the last, lastly, the addition of the William James Interface Service. This is a mental health resource service that matches people in need of outpatient mental health support with appropriate therapeutic supports in our area. As school counselors, we're often asked by families to provide specific outside counselor names and resources. It's a challenging and time consuming system for families to navigate. And the addition of this service would be invaluable to all of Tingsborough. Information as to how to utilize this service will be forthcoming as we move closer to our contract start date. In closing, we just want to thank you again for the opportunity to come to speak with you tonight. This has been a challenging time for everyone, but we are dedicated to providing support to the students, staff and families of our community. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you for the presentation and thank you for all the hard work, especially over the last year. I'm interested, I'm a numbers guy. I'm interested, do you track any metrics on visits? So I'm curious, you know, what percentage of the population were you seeing pre COVID? What's that increase look like now? If you don't have those numbers right now, you know.
Yeah, it's exciting. We talked about this before we came in terms of, you know, tracking that. And I think it's fairly fluid. You know, we have our caseloads of consistent students that we know we see. We have a smaller group of students that we know through the year we pop up at different times. And I think our struggles, you know, being in the schools is trying to identify the students or families that need help that we just don't know about. And maybe they don't know about us and trying to connect. So that again, that's where we try to track the teachers. And sometimes our involvement may just be one conversation with a family. So there's different levels of tracking as well, something more ongoing.
Yeah. And I would say that overall, we have seen an increase in the stress level and the need for consultation with families and students and teachers.
I think that stress level has kind of permeated the entire area. So I think that everybody kind of feels it. And as a result, I think some of our kids that are, have more challenges are having more challenges as a result. So like she said, it is fluid. It's tough to give you numbers, but we definitely feel the increase in the.
Thank you. Small?
No, it's not a question. It's a comment. You know, I first started hearing social emotional learning probably about three years ago at a MASC, MASs meeting that we had down on the Cape and decided to pop in and take a look and, you know, see what it was about because it was a big portion of those, those days were meetings around that. And I'm sitting in the meeting, going over their initiatives and thinking, we already do this in Tingsborough. Why do we really have to put a name to it? And I'm thinking, well, maybe there are a lot of districts that don't do that. I've been fortunate to see their efforts for the last nine years, I think now. And I can't say enough good things about what they do, how they impact family and kids on a daily basis. And just making such a difference in those kids' lives to help them navigate it. Because it, you know, school is tough enough as it is, but to have challenges in your lives, it's just, it can be double and triply hard. But I just want to thank you both and the entire counseling team for just the wonderful work that you do. So thanks. I'm done. Sorry. You never know when I'm done.
Anybody else have any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that I think they understand their value, their worth and how hard they're working this year. Our counselors have been on the street and they've done a phenomenal job and we couldn't be more proud of the work that they do K to 12. We spent a lot of time talking about the effort that our teachers put in and our nurses put in. But our counselors, our related service providers, they're pulling the rope just as hard as anyone else. And we really just want to thank you for all that you do. You're doing a great job. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm still talking. So what I was going to say is, you know, it's budget season, right? We're starting to look at next year's budget. I know. Things are different now than they were a year ago. So I'm sure, you know, Dr. Flanagan, his team will be having these conversations with you. But, you know, I would encourage you to start thinking about, you know, what new tools and, you know, what sort of budgetary concerns you have for next year that we can start to think about to include for that budget. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
I think I know what you're going to ask for.
Okay. Item eight, unfinished business, school committee update. Dr. Flanagan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would you stop in our weekly update at this point?
Yep.
It's my weekly update, excuse me. So again, our learning model drivers, we will prioritize the health and safety of all students and staff. Our primary goal is to use context and data as we think about making decisions about learning models one way or the other. We'll jump out to our weekly report. So current numbers there. You can see that we currently have nine active cases. One at TES, two at TMS, five at THS and one district wide personnel. If we look at the town data, we can see, I know that those are mentioned to us earlier, but that we've been in red for a long time. Our community is actually trending downwards now in the red. The positivity rate is coming down a little bit. I know the COVID staff review team meets weekly. They're watching this data information and they kind of understand what that means in the larger context of the community and the school system as well as the state. So that again, for parents and community members, that's available on our webpage. It's updated as close to real time as possible. And that's the information for this week.
If I could just jump in real quick here, Mike?
Sure.
So if you look at the absolute number of cases, you know, it looks like it's gone up a little bit. But I think the important metric to look at is the percent positivity and that's decreased for five weeks in a row. The number of cases is dependent on how many people are tested. But the percentage of those being tested continues to decline since we peaked back in December, I believe. So it's good. It's five weeks of improving numbers.
Great. So Mark, can we jump back to the PowerPoint?
Yep, sorry.
So as we continue on, again, DESI and Mass DPH metrics, schools and educators should consider hybrid and maximize in person learning, time for high need students. So Mark, we'll go to the next one. Moving towards increased in person learning. I think I greatly appreciate the letter from the union leadership, which talked about a lot of these initiatives. We're working together on this. We're communicating regularly about what we can do. I think the trend that we're hearing at the federal and state level is that we want to move towards in person learning as soon as we can, as safely as we can, when it's safe. So I'm working closely with the union. We're talking about the pool testing initiative. I heard a little bit more about that last Friday. I do have a little bit of reservation because the model that they want to do with pool testing in the district is a train the trainer model. So in other words, they want the school to assist them to essentially run the testing in your district without really a whole lot of support. So they give you the financial support, they give you the training, but the manpower is something that I'm a little concerned about. So I will work closely with our nurses. I think our nurses are working incredibly hard right now. And I do have a little bit of reservation taking another initiative and putting it on them at this time. But they've been great and we're communicating back and forth on that, so we will continue to look at that. Again, we continue to bargain with TTA. We're talking about, you know, how do we bring kids back in person? How does it look? How do we do it safely? So those conversations are ongoing. We do have an updated advisory. It's not necessarily been pushed out and supported by DESI yet, but there is new information out there about transportation. And it says that as long as windows are open, even a fraction, a half an inch, you can get potentially up to 20 air changes on a bus on a typical run. The standard number of air changes they want in a classroom, in a closed classroom, is four to six. So to get 20 air exchanges on a bus with windows open and flow going through, they seem to think that buses may be a little bit safer than anticipated back in August. Vaccination rollout, as you know, Michelle Riley, kudos to her. She's working with Mass Pharma or DPH. And she has made Tingsborough Middle School a potential vaccination site at this point. We did do a sign up for our staff. We had over 190 staff out of about 230 say that they would be willing to get the vaccine as soon as it's available. So that's all great news. We do expect an advisory later this week from DESI that will talk specifically about vaccination rollout for teachers. So when I have that information, I'm certainly bringing that to the next school committee, so you're aware of that. So our goal is to position ourselves to be able to get needles in arms as soon as we can. I feel like we're there. I think we've done everything we can. It's a matter of getting the vaccine in our hands. As you know, yesterday, Governor Baker put out his phase two, a revised phase two plan, which moves adults age 75 and older first in phase two, adults 65 and older and individuals with two comorbidities to second in phase two, and K to 12 educated, early educators are now phase three of stage two. So we were originally stage two.
Of stage.
Stage two. So to get bumped down one is a little concerning, but you know, phase two is effective or people are able to sign up as of yesterday. So it's close, it's coming, it's happening and we're ready to go. This is a fluid situation. We will continue to monitor it. Our hope is certainly over the next few weeks that the community numbers continue the trend that they're on. I think that would be great for everyone. And we could continue to have these conversations. As you know, we talked about fluid. At four o'clock today, the CDC released research that said it doesn't look like schools are super spreaders and that the CDC might be modifying their position a little bit. The study came out at four o'clock today, so I don't have all the details on it. But there's more good information there. So I'll go to the next slide. So we are looking to move towards in person learning. And this is actually item nine B on our agenda, but I just kept it in the slide deck, so we'll just keep going. So one of the things that we talked about is we were looking to prioritize the needs of three specific groups. First, we'd like to bring our substantially separate program, Bridges Class. We'd like to move to bring those students back five days a week. And we'd like to, my recommendation is to potentially have that effective as of next Monday. Another group that we're concerned about that we'd like to pay a little bit more attention to, get a little bit more time with, are specifically identified pre K families. There are a core group of pre K students that we would like to provide an increase of service to as early as next Wednesday. So with the school committee's approval tonight, or a positive vote or affirmative vote on phase one, we have a group of educators at TES ready to make phone calls tomorrow to these families to see if they'll be ready to roll for next Wednesday to get more kids in for support and services. And the third group, and really the building administration's been doing this kind of all along. But as we're identifying kids that may be needing a little bit more attention, they've been upping their schedule from two days of hybrid learning to four days of in person learning. So the building administrators will continue to do that. And we're talking not just, you know, a specialized population, we're talking all students, whether it's a senior that's not doing great right now, needs three classes to graduate, whether it's an EL student, whether it's a high special education needs student, whatever. We're keeping that open and we'd like to open that filter a little bit more. So our thought right now, the only analogy I can think of is if we turn the faucet on a little bit, we turn the faucet on a little bit to bring kids back. That's the goal. And my hope is that the school committee would vote to support a phase one move tonight so that so that we can plan accordingly and hit the ground running for next Monday. Go to the next slide, please, Mark. My hope is to come to our February ninth school committee meeting and begin to talk about Phase Two, in-person learning, and what does that look like? Um, who are we talking about? Are we talking about kindergarten? Are we talking about kindergarten through grade five? Are we talking about how we bring them back, in what manner? I want to come to you with some costs, I want to come to you with some timelines. This is all the work that's being done right now. This is what we're meeting with the union, with this is what our ministry team's working on right now. We are ready to go for Phase One, and all the work for Phase Two is being done now. So I want to come back on February ninth and say, here's what we think we can do, and here's when we think we can do it, and here's the cost that goes with it, and see what the committee wants to do at that point. But, that's where we are in terms of more in-person learning. Mark, if you go back to the previous slide, be happy to answer any questions about this.
I think you did a great job explaining it, I don't have any questions.
I just have one, um, for the, uh, pre-K, do we already have the staff in place for that, or does that, okay?
We do, yep.
All right.
Any other questions? Okay, good, Mike.
I guess, can I make?
Sorry, how many kids are in the Bridges program that'll be coming in?
So, kids in the Bridges program, they're in four days a week right now, how many kids, we're talking?
They're already in four days a week.
Right.
So it's just one more day.
Less than 25 across the district?
Okay, thank you.
Ballpark.
Gotcha.
So, Mr. Chair, we could take action, or I could finish the slide deck and come back to the agenda, whatever you want to do.
Uh, let's finish the...
Okay. The other thing that we talked about, or I heard from the committee a few weeks ago, was, uh, the desire to keep meeting regularly, next slide, Mark? Meeting regularly as we go, and as you know, when we put on our original calendar, we only had one meeting for February, so, uh, I would seek to understand if the committee wants to add a second meeting in February, on February 23rd. Again, just to, to see where we are in terms of Phase Two for reopening, to see where the community numbers are, I think it's a great idea on behalf of the committee that we, we keep these regular meetings, so everyone's in the, in the loop, in the know, and as things change, we can come back in a public venue and, and, and broadcast that.
Do we need a motion to, uh, have that meeting?
Yeah, we'll do the motions after, let's play.
And then after that, we just have school committee discussion at this point. For this part of the meeting.
Do we have any questions for Dr. Flanagan?
So I guess we can jump back up to the agenda, Mark, and go right to nine B.
I'm sorry, what was the date for the new meeting? February 23rd? Thought we already had that in.
No.
Before we go to nine B, we should make the motion to... I'll make the motion to have our February 23rd meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Does that fit with your agenda? Did you get Rob? Excuse me, sorry? Does that fit with your timeline?
I made a motion to have the February 23rd meeting. It was seconded in by Rebecca.
Okay.
And we're open for comment.
And we're open for comments. I, this funny thing, I've already got us down for the ninth and the 23rd, but, yep.
Perfect. You're ahead of us.
Two thumbs up for it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries 7-0-0. Rob was ahead of the curve. Uh, item nine B, I will seek a motion to move the district into Phase One of reopening as presented by Dr. Flanagan.
I'll make that motion.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries 7-0-0. Thank you. Finance, Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, seven bill warrants were presented to the committee tonight. Um, the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts are in drive. I do have them all back signed. Um, no signing of payroll tonight, uh, we'll, we'll catch up on that in the next meeting. Part of the financial package, last time we did that until January 1st enrollment, so those numbers are available to you if you would like to read them.
I would love to, thank you. At TES, we have 748 students, TMS 395, THS 445, and 23 out of district for a total of 1,611 students.
And just one last thing, if I put under other, uh, we do have our first budget committee meeting scheduled for tomorrow night at seven, so looking forward to meeting with the three numbers and getting some, some thoughts and ideas.
Ad hoc, right? Ad hoc.
Subcommittee, I'm only getting the budget.
Yeah? Okay.
Sounds great.
Drop the sub right off.
You like numbers.
I love, I love numbers, I hate finance. No offense, Joe.
Nothing, I hate it too.
Uh, with that, we will go to the school committee discussion. Natalie? Rob?
Um, I have always been a vocal supporter of our teachers. The last few months, uh, with their requests, with the request from a portion of our teachers to ask, uh, to delay, um, going to a different type of hybrid model, uh, while I support the ideas of it, it's concerning to me that our teachers are split. It's very difficult hearing from both sides and asking us to decide on something that affects all of them when they're not coming to us as a united front on this. As a school board, it's our responsibility to negotiate with the school, with the teachers' union. When that is split, it's very difficult for us to make a decision based on their wants and needs. I want to continue to support any of the requests by the teachers, but I need to ask them to continue talking to them, to each other, to come up with a united plan on what they would like to see. For us, I, I have relationships with quite a few teachers in this district, and it hurts me to have to say no to one and yes to another. I want to be able to say yes to all of them. So please, teachers, um, have, continue to have these conversations, uh, and then let, come to us and let us know what you want. We want to work with you, uh, we want the best for our kids and for our staff at all times, um, and we want to do what's right for everyone. And that's all I have tonight.
I'm good, thank you.
Just a quick thank you one more time to our counseling team, um, you know, who continues to take care of not just the kids, but the adults in the building, the families within the community. Um, you know, we keep talking about the unique year we're in, you know, regardless of the unique year we're in, they do heavy lifting, um, and we need to take care of all, all of ourselves to make sure everybody feels good about coming to work and coming to school, and I think that they're just an integral part of that work, so thank you to them.
Joe?
That was that, thank you. That was that, thank you.
Um, the weather driving in here was not very good, so please, everyone in this room and our guests in the other room, uh, drive careful, and thank you.
I really like what Rob just said about challenging the teachers to come up with ideas of how to move school district forward to in-person learning, um, to think of, you know, how they would find it to be a more comfortable plan. Um, I think that's a great challenge, and I think that's, um, something that they should all be thinking of, because that all is our goal, um, and would be the best way to do it from a perspective.
Thank you.
I have nothing tonight, thanks.
So I know our seniors are working on planning some outdoor events for the end of the year, so I'm, I'm hopeful, Natalie, that you can, you can find something to do, we can celebrate as, as much as you can and get some normalcy for you guys. You're doing a great job this year, and, uh, you know, I, I just, as a dad of a senior, I know there are two more parents of seniors sitting at this table as well, uh, you know, it's been a rough year, but, but we're hopeful that you can have some kind of end-of-year celebration that, that really you all deserve, so, uh, keep up the hard work now, we appreciate it.
I want to thank the TTA for the letter they sent. Um, I want to thank the teachers for showing up and reading their letter, voicing their concerns. I want to thank the school counselors for showing up and explaining, you know, what they do, that's not a group we typically hear from, um, so, I thought that was nice, maybe it's something we want to do in the future also.
Absolutely.
So it was definitely a worthwhile presentation. Uh, we do have a need for executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. We will return from the executive session only to adjourn the regular session meeting. This action requires a roll call vote. We need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
And discussion? Roll call?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Carry 7-0-0, we are now in executive session. Have a good night, everybody.